No, it's weird because I could see five comments and they weren't nice.
Yeah.
And that's a feat of dignity.
Yeah, they don't, we don't count them as public comment. We just count them as...
It's there, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's not, you know, they're hitting comments and you see these live comments coming from, you know, it's very, it's not appropriate.
The county used Teams or like if we were doing this meeting tonight, we would be on Teams. For the public, it's through Facebook Live. What we have found though is there's actually about a 30-second lag.
Yeah.
Between what we say here and what they see out there. So when you're actually doing an open comment segment, you need to remember that there's 30 seconds in there that they need to keep it on. Uh, when are you cheating tonight?
Good evening, everyone.
How are you doing?
Uh, I'm okay. Um, I had the stomach bug or flu or something on Monday. I was out most, I was out all day Tuesday and half a day today. Just took me and knocked me on my butt.
And I'm sure that county planning commission meeting didn't help, huh?
That's the longest county planning commission I've ever had to endure. And uh, I, I had to turn my head and yawn. It was not, nothing to do with the commission is I just, I can only stand so much. It's terrible.
You can make an appropriate comments, but I won't.
Yeah. I, I, I do recommend stomach virus for late, for weight loss. It really works. You have no appetite for anything.
So it's 6:30.
One, two, three, four, five.
Out of seven.
Out of seven.
Is a quarant.
Works for me. All right, and Lee, as far as I can tell right now, you're the only one who is on virtually with us right now.
Okay, that's correct.
Okay.
So I guess in the, in the notion of time, we will be rolling at 6:30. Good evening, everybody. Tonight is our fourth and hopefully final meeting of this re district commission. As you recall, we need to have a decision to sit down, so uh, by March 1st. So when we left last month, there were two recommendations on the table. Let's see, we've got one more joining us.
Dara.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening, Dara.
Hello.
All right, we, we just got started. When we left last month, we had two recommendations on the table. I'm trying to shout so the microphones can hear ourselves here with them. One was the combination proposal where we had, um, two people that recommended the same one, which was moving precinct 5-1 from, help me out here.
From 1 to 6.
From District 1 to District 6. The second recommendation was to leave the districts the way they are and not touch them. We actually took a straw poll and that's all it was, was a straw. It had no meaning. There were four who wanted to make the move. There were three who were in favor of keeping it the way it was. When we left.
Was it the other way around?
Yeah, it's, it's.
From 5 from?
District 6 to District 1.
6 to 1.
Yeah.
When we left, everybody kind of wanted to take a month to think about it. And everybody said, well, you know what? Let's take a month, let's drive around the city. Let's look at the neighborhoods. Let's see where these boundaries actually are in real life. See if the issues kind of coincide and we'll come back and we'll make a decision. So that's where we're at tonight. And Wendy's shaking her head, so I guess I didn't miss anything. Thank you. So, discussion. And I'm going to throw it out to the commission members here. Lori, I know you had some thoughts initially or you said you had some thoughts?
Um, no, I just, um, we got kind of in the weeds with neighborhoods and this and that. Then with the information that was given back to us from the solicitors and the experts that you two found, I really think we also need to pay attention to the numbers. And I certainly am sympathetic to people not wanting to change things just because there's cohesion, just in keeping things the same. But the current map, that standard deviation is at 542. And looking at the proposal in front of us, that comes down to 358. Other than the ones that, uh, that we came up with and, and, and that we came up with that were worth, changed a whole bunch of things. Um, this one came closest to getting that standard deviation number down. And I think we should also keep that in mind because that number bunch of different ways to determine our charter. So the number of economy is of the priority.
That, that is the driving force in any and all redistricting um, exercises is the whole point is to have that equal representation. You are correct in that the proposal before us does bring that standard deviation down. While at the same time, and this is something I was discussing as well, requiring the fewest people change districts, which I think is also a benefit. You know, we would be moving, what, 1 precinct? In the grand scheme of things, you really can't beat that.
I will also add that, um, looking at the, uh, this one though, this is the redistricting, this is part of the charter.
I think that is an explanation to, yes, that's made in the charter.
So that's the administrative code, part of the charter for this city. Does say the last thing is, you know, we're the commission that was appointed and, you know, all the details that we talked about up till now. But what we present to council, council has, the last thing it says is council shall, you know, has the right to adopt what we recommend or they have the right to keep it at the status quo. So if, if there are issues or if people feel that the status quo is better than changing just that one district, maybe we leave that up to council to decide since we have that and discussed and we're very close to being even. Maybe that's, you know, keep it in their court. If it's important to them, then they can, then they can decide to keep it the way it is. Yep. If that's important to their districts and their whatever.
Well, the way the project is going to unfold is we make, we make our presentation to council. We give them our idea or our proposal. Council holds that public hearing, after which ultimately they make a decision. So if the public has concerns, that is their time to voice that. Obviously, these have been all public meetings. They've always been do we prioritize? We haven't heard from the public. So that would be the opportunity for council. If there's public concerns, they would be brought up. Council can act on those public concerns or council can take our recommendation and act on it that way. But generally by the end of this month, our work is finished. I don't want to say tonight because heaven help us. Somebody throws a monkey wrench in the re-dissent, we don't like anything. We have to lose to get something to get. So, good evening, Wayne. That's, and I want to keep, I, I don't want to ignore the folks who are on with us virtually. We've got Morra.
Or Dara.
Don't leave her, Dara.
Well, I was just throwing my, my opinion. It's just opinion. Uh, our, our charter is to find districts that are as close to population parity as we can reasonably get while keeping in mind, um, well, the old, uh, the general state law and also community, community neighborhoods together and stuff like that. I see a big advantage in minimizing the number of people to change districts because I think that just, I, I, it always leaves people a little unsettled when they're, when they thought they had one council member and now it's the different council member. And I, I, so I don't, I could, I could minimize even farther than the option on the table. I can minimize it even farther to get a lower standard deviation by moving a quarter of the people in the city from one district to another. And I don't think that that's an appropriate way to do it. So, um, looking at the graphs that go with the maps, the two bar graphs here. The bar graph for the option where we moved that one precinct is more balanced and, and the standard deviation is lower. I know it moves exactly based on the population number, 1,049 people, which is 1% of population, 1.1% of population. So I think that that meets, in my opinion, the balance of what our charter says, or what our charge says we're supposed to do. I would also, just to say, I would also be comfortable with keeping the current map. Although it is less population balanced, um, it does disrupt things less. Not that the one is disrupted, but if, if the, if the, if the commission voted to go with the no change option, I would not give a vote. But I would advocate for the one change. That's my reason.
It sounds as though, and the way I read the different, different explicit opinions, which you will receive. Yes, the law says we have to make the numbers work. However, the charter does grant us the latitude to take into account everything that was passed. So as I said in my email last week, both options are on the table. Both options are very viable. Hang on.
I was in one of the, uh, was sort of in favor of status quo. Uh, and then seeing the, the governor's listeners. Am I correct that they were basically saying federal says numbers, state sort of numbers, local neighborhoods? So it sounds like the, the emphasis appears to be on common.
Yes.
And unfortunately, either one of the things we talked about doesn't address the fact that District 4 is still way down there. And I don't want to have to sit without moving
A lot of people.
A lot of people. And would have crossed over, uh, the back reach of the 7th Street, the, and River and all that stuff. Uh, I did make a drive through the area. I, I fairly familiar with District 5. And, uh, or with, uh, precinct 5, that was 4. And, uh, and then also looking at Google Maps, I did not realize how much of those districts, or those precincts rather, were commercial. It wasn't, you have to go to Franklin Street where you start to see what's where. The only, the only, not objection, but the only thing that I see now, I, I could go along with moving the type of precinct into District 1. But the, the 4th precinct is sort of like an island of its, you know, all its own there. You're separated from some of the other south end precincts. It looks a little weird, but when you look at it like I did on Google Maps, there aren't that many households that appear to be affected. So it must be a lot of, all the, uh, family households, uh, departments as opposed to some of the other districts. I would not have a problem with moving, uh, District 5. District 5, if the number is closer. I just, a lot of people are just moving into District 4, but I don't know how much room there is up there. There's room, but, uh, yeah, I, I, I would go along with moving that one precinct.
Just the point of thinking that to go with what you were saying, uh, this is precinct?
Precinct 5. I got you doing it that much.
Uh, precinct 5 is the second smallest of the, uh, precincts. It's only got 1,049. That's only one smaller.
And that's because that is in fact a very heavily commercialized district or commercial district, or precinct rather.
I got it.
I will say you can rationalize, which they're good at rationalizations, the, the population deficit in District 4. By, but you rationalize it by saying Albright is a temporary population, but for a large part of the year. So certainly, I would think those numbers actually get close. And, and really what, what your councilperson and what the city decides affects those students just not quite as much, but quite a bit. Just like it does residents. And, you know, so certainly that temporary population certainly bumps up the issue. So I would think that that representative in District 4 has to.
Does it say that for Alvernia? That's what it's saying, or is Alvernia in?
Well, Alvernia's District 1. You are correct.
Yeah. So it's the, with us moving, it definitely boosts.
No, it doesn't. Well, it, yes, I know what you're saying though. In essence, if you think about temporary population, you would also have to understand that temporary population, that's a very good point. Which I guess actually Alvernia has a quarter of its population in Albright.
And I'll be back.
Um, yeah.
If, if we move 5-1, it's College Town in 5-1 or 4?
5-1.
That isn't 5-1.
I know. No, no, it's, it's, uh, 7-1 or 7-1.
4.
This is 1 of the precincts, this is 6. Yeah, I think it's 7-1.
Yeah, I think it is 7-1.
Yeah. They walk across the street and, uh, enter the census fight to the other side of 10th Street.
Right.
We're located in College Town here on, uh, 4th and 10th. If that helps anyone.
Right. 6-1. If they, they do have students house there right now, correct?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Not many, but there are some students here that reside here. Yeah.
That's right.
And the number will increase and, um, they're going to be taking, uh, Alvernia will be taking a repurchase. And that will also be different.
Is, is that still going to be their national students?
Yes.
Legend National.
Their presentation, whether they give us, whether they give us our inherent work, their control.
I don't know.
So, yeah, we have to set back and tell them here and more to get the numbers straight. Uh, because they do, they've been working on it. And we did the original work. He's not, he's not involved with it now, but he mentioned, he, he did a little bit of work for Alvernia on that project. So it didn't long go.
Okay. Yeah, what are your thoughts?
I'm inclined to go with, uh, this one change. Um, I also think that if, if they, if we really want to get serious about changing precincts and numbers and people and divvying all this up, I think in the next 10 years, if they could get some, a group of people together to go over all that to, like you're saying, you would like to see some other changes from other precincts. And maybe till the next census, we can do this one, but till the next census comes and they can see those numbers versus this. And then maybe work on that in the next 10 years to get all that modified and be able to.
It'll be, it'll be one next.
Would it just someone to get together and really want to do that?
That would be an exercise for the city planning commission staff.
Oh.
I'm being hopeful.
Sorry. Sorry, but that's my.
No, that's a great idea. Folks, folks on the computer, uh, we'll go with the ladies first. Norma, you feeling better?
Your meeting. Hi, I'm feeling better. Sorry. I was really, I was down for four weeks. COVID got me. What is the question?
Um, just going around, getting everybody's individual thoughts on the, the proposals that we have. So far.
I, I, I was really thinking about how the, um, census was taken during the like height of the pandemic. I was just wondering if that affected any numbers as far as the colleges being involved.
What I can tell you is the students who live on campus.
Mm-hmm.
Colleges worked with the Census Bureau to include them.
To include them? Okay, because I know a lot of students were sent, were sent home during the height of the pandemic, during when the census was taken. But that just stood on my mind on how that affects the population of the districts such as the ones where Albright and Alvernia where they have dorms.
Right. Now, nationwide, the Census Bureau did work with colleges and universities to make sure that they could count all the students. They at least got those who live on campus or in college housing. Where we found problems was in a place like Cookstown University. The dorm students were all counted, but most of those who live off campus were not. So where does that leave us? We know with Albright, the vast majority of the students live on campus. So for the most part, they were covered. For Alvernia, a good number of those students live on campus. So for the most part, they were covered. Uh, obviously RAC are all commuter students and the other two colleges and parks are outside the area. So for the most part, I believe we got the college students that are here in the city.
Okay.
I'm not sure what percentage of Alvernia's students are off campus and whether they were missed or not. But I know they all worked with Bureau to get their on-campus students counted.
All right. That was just basically my thoughts this past few weeks, the last, from the last meeting that I happened to attend. And, um, I'm actually catching up. I have, I missed four weeks out of the office. You know, I work at RAC. So I've been trying to catch up in these past three days. I just returned Monday. So I've been reading while you guys are talking, trying to catch up on the last meeting.
Okay. Well, we'll catch up a little more. We'll go to Redara and get her thoughts.
Okay.
Hello. Um, so I think where we left off last meeting were, were between the two decisions, whether we were, um, going to make no change and the other one, we were going with option.
It was, it was a combination of an option B, option A, uh, which were both actually the same thing. We were going to 1 precinct. That 1 precinct south of 10.
Right.
And so far, right now, everybody at least around the table here is agreeing with that.
Yeah, and I, my decision would be to agree with that as well. We're not going to go with no change then. I wouldn't see any, I wouldn't, I don't foresee any issues with, uh, changing that one precinct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Olson.
Well, I look at my two maps of Bellman Option A and Kell Option B. In both of them, uh, 5, Districts 5 and 2 stay the same. So we're talking about the north-south corridor of the city with 5th Street as a divider. And I see more change in the, uh, in the, uh, the 4 and 3 with Kell. As I, uh, I'm sorry, with 4 and 3 with Bellman as opposed to Kell. And 6 changes more with, um, with Kell. You know, at the end of the day, uh, I think we should make change. I'm, I, I, looking at these little more, I'd like to know a little bit more why, uh, on the option A, uh, District 3 starts to creep north along 5th Street into what was District 4, reducing District 4 in one hand, but then bringing it closer to the city core uh, in the, in, in the southern, southern section. Uh, uh, I, I'm just, I, I know, I know that she wants to, you know, get these as, as, as close to being neighborhood identified as this is where I live. I live in this district. I live in this, this neighborhood. Uh, uh, it's so close. I mean, I, I don't think either one of these two is a bad decision. I just think that, uh, those of you that represent the districts who have a closer feel and feel on the pulse, uh, looking at, uh, you know, 6-1 and 3-4 and the changes, how does that impact you as, as a citizen? What do you guys think and gals think? Uh, I'm, you know, right now I could take a coin and flip it and it could either be option B or option A. Uh, I see no real driving force to, uh, to pick one over the other. I, I think they're both, uh, there's no ideal situation, uh, but I'm trying to find a hard differentiator between the two.
I agree, Lee.
So was Lee taught, Lee, were you talking about an option to change this 3 and 4, District 3 and 4? Because we narrowed down to options that don't touch those. So I'm not sure you're looking at the same ones we're looking at.
Probably not because, uh, because the one that I got didn't have a, an option printed on the top. I'm probably not looking at the same thing, what I printed out. Quite honestly, uh, I think we have vetted this very well. I think if we make a decision not to change anything because the numbers from day one were so close that they were within a half a percent, uh, you know, uh, there were no major swings one way or the other, just some natural migration for whatever reason. And, uh, quite honestly, if you said, would you vote for keeping it as is? I would say yes.
Okay. Thank you, Lee.
You're welcome.
He, he held a good point. I would say I, I agree with keeping it as it is as well.
Okay, so let me take a straw poll then at this point and just get a final feeling on where we stand right now. And I'm just going to go down my list. This is in no particular order. Uh, Lori.
What are, what are the options? Let's just make sure we've identified what it is we're talking about.
I apologize. Thank you. Lori, Lori said, what are the options that we're going with? Right now, we're still in our original two options that we left this last month. The, your proposal and Brian's proposal, which would be moving precinct 5-1.
From District 6.
From District 6 to District 1. The second proposal would be to do nothing. Those are where we're at right now. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm just going to go down the list. Straw poll. Lori.
I'm agreeing that this should change.
Okay, Lori's up for moving, moving 5-1. Okay, Brian.
I would agree with that also.
You would change. You would make the change. Wayne.
I would go ahead and move it.
You would make the change. Redara. I'm going down each one of my list.
Uh, I will go back to my, uh, original thought, which is no change.
No change. Okay. Tom.
Uh, I would go with make the change.
Make the change. Uh, Lee.
I would make the change.
You would make the change?
Yes.
Okay. Pam. Make the change. And Norma.
5-1, that's the, that little area that you guys were talking about before. And that will go, and we're talking about moving that district from District 6 to 5 or, um, 6 to 1?
6 to 1, correct.
6 to 1?
Yes.
I agree with it.
Yep.
I agree with it, six to one.
Okay, based on that poll, eight people here. We have seven who say they could change and one who's, and one who would like to keep the way they are. Do we want to have any further discussions?
I mean, honestly, I would, I, I could vote either way. I don't necessarily disagree with the change, so.
Okay. We want to push that in the form of a formal motion to council. Are we ready to do that? We're ready to present this council.
Okay. I'll, I'll move to lead on the side to make a motion to council with that change.
Okay. Second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sweet. All right. Thank you all. No, I'm, I'm not done, don't worry. Now, there, there, there's still some other things we need to do yet. Number one, when we started the meeting, I just started clapping my guns. Did everybody get a chance to read twenty minutes from the last meeting? Were there any changes or corrections or additions that needed to be made? All right, we can consider those approved as submitted then? Okay, sounds good. Next thing we need to do is figure out, at this point, once they have presented the council, their council will hold a public hearing. I'm going to go on you and how should we make this present or proposal to the council? Do we just write this out, send them an email or send an email to you? Does somebody need to be in the meeting to make a formal presentation?
Someone should be at the public hearing to make a formal presentation.
Okay.
I would suggest sending the recommendation in writing via email.
Okay.
Like you could just do a memo from the commission, like I could send you a city memo form.
Okay.
And I think I would attach Brian's list.
I would, I would attach the, the, this.
Yes.
In the PDF version.
Which I have.
Which I have.
Right. And with the map.
Yeah. Okay.
I would probably for comparison do the one with change at the current.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. All right, what I will do then is I'll actually put that together. Since I have all those materials, I'll put that together. I'll, I'll come up with a memo. Do you folks want to read that memo before I send it to Linda or do you just want to trust me to get it to her and?
I would mine see that it's going to be represented as.
Okay, well then what I will do is I'll get that together, I'll forward it to everybody. And what I will ask is, Linda, when does, when do you need it? I mean, supposedly this has to go to the council at their next regular, this meeting would be Sunday?
Well, you're not going to make it because I need to close the agenda out by tomorrow at camp.
Okay.
So the next would be, just let me pull my calendar up.
The end of the month.
Yeah, be the Wednesday before the twenty eighth.
Okay.
Which is the twenty second?
The Wednesday before.
Twenty third.
That'll be the twenty third, yeah. Okay, what I would, what I would ask is, I'll put it together, I'll get it out to everybody. If you could have me any comments that you would have by the sixteenth, that'll give us, you know, a couple of days in a week, that way I can then forward to Linda and we'll get the ball rolling with council.
And I think I have a tentative date for the public hearing, too. Just let me pull open my stuff here.
Is everybody viewing this screen now?
We as a committee, we can be there, all of us. That's necessary or?
Somebody should put on the, the council meeting? At the public hearing, we should have some representation there, yes. Now, I'm guessing that's, is that going to be a virtual meeting or is that in person?
At this point, at, at this, at this point, it's going to be either completely virtual or it'll be hybrid, meaning council will be in the room and all other attendees will be virtual.
Okay. I don't know if you folks can see this on your screens. Linda's just looking at her tentative calendar.
Yeah, I have it tentatively scheduled for March twenty first.
Okay.
And that would be at five.
Oh, March twenty first.
Yeah, March twenty first.
Wow, my mother's birthday.
And that's for the public hearing.
Correct.
Correct. Did you folks at home hear that?
Yeah, March twenty first is the city council meeting.
But that would actually be the public hearing on this proposal.
Correct.
And you do, you do not need to be physically present for that. We would be in a hybrid format, so we'd all be on the computer, council would be in person. January, February. So, yeah, the next council meeting is twenty first. Or the?
Next council meeting is the twenty, February twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth, okay.
Right.
Well, you close the agenda out on Wednesday.
Wednesday. Correct, right.
Okay.
And then somebody presents that to council at that meeting or not?
So they just have it on the agenda?
Yeah, they just have to get the recommendation.
Okay. Well, you don't need any, anybody to make a formal presentation to council.
No, I would do that at the public hearing.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so we're just going to firm council to council, doesn't take any action until after the public hearing.
Correct.
And then that, okay.
Okay. All right, sounds good. So is this where we, annoying Lori?
We need to annoy anybody. I would, my personal recommendation would be since this would be a hybrid type of public hearing, I would encourage all members to be there. Certainly, you know, myself or Brian, since we seem to be the people that came up with this, you know, could, could quickly present something. But I think if you have the time, it would be nice to have anybody there in case they have any questions publicly or from council itself.
It would also look good to the public if any public showed up to see people from each of the districts present. So that they all feel that they have some representation in the process.
Spee, speaking of, I know we lost a, a member of this group. Did we ever, was it District One? Hector, did we ever speak to someone regarding some, somewhat reputation from District One?
Former councilwoman Lucine Salheneck reached out to him. He agreed to do it. After the first or second meeting, I said something to Lucine about him not attending. In fact, I recall first, he told you he wanted to attend virtually.
Correct.
Which is doable, but he didn't do that.
No.
So Lucine tried to reach out to him again, but was not able to make contact.
Okay.
Now, Breonna Tyson. She went.
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't watch.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, to recap, we do have a proposal that we're going to send to council. I will put that together in the form of a memo with all the required background information. I will get that to all of you to please look it over, give me your thoughts and your comments before I formalize that, at which point I will get that to Linda. She will forward it to council and get it on their agenda for Monday, the twenty eighth. After which council will schedule the public hearing from March twenty first to five o'clock. Both of those meetings will be hybrids, so we will not have to show up physically anywhere, just being in front of our computer. And then likely we're good to go. Now, you know, I'm just throwing this out there, if you don't feel comfortable presenting to council, you know, I, you do that, that's not an issue, but.
Certainly, I have no problem, I'm sure Brian doesn't either. I think with emails, we can decide, you know, by that time if it's, you know, if somebody should actually do a presentation or not. Is that okay? A real phone, is that a real phone?
Okay.
You know, I, I, I feel like I tend to over-prepare for certain things and probably don't need to do that for this. So maybe we just kind of have a, have a rough idea of who will do what, but those public hearings, they seem to go pretty quickly.
Yeah, I, I wonder how many people of the public will actually come or virtually come to this public hearing unless somebody has a real right, which I, only a thousand people changing, how, how engaged are those thousand people out of all the hundred thousand people in the city?
I would.
Ten, ten years ago, there was one person who came out at the public hearing who we had never heard from in the past, and that individual showed up and raised some concerns more about the process than anything else. And. We moved on.
Well, and to Rad's point, I, it would be nice that if it would have had some District One representation. And so I would rely on that councilperson's current, councilperson to give any kind of concerns because we are changing District One. So it would be nice to have some feedback from District One.
And probably from District Six. Well, we have feedback in, in the commission from District Six through the commission, I guess. But, yeah, District One is being changed with no. Yeah, live person.
Just for giggles, I, I'd like to ask, for those of you who were appointed by a council member, have you actually been keeping touch with that member, letting them know of our deliberations?
Well, to tell you the truth, they wouldn't want to know.
Okay.
They want to stay completely detached.
All right, that makes sense, that makes sense.
Yeah, I haven't been in communication with Johani at all.
Okay.
Marcia is my neighbor and we did spend the holidays together, but we did not discuss this at all.
Yeah, and I probably talked to Marcia more than any other, more than my own. And we have, I haven't spoken with her about it either. Very briefly, I just mentioned something early on in the process, but.
And the only thing that I've said is that I think you're all doing a great job.
Oh.
Oh. Thank you, Linda. We'll see that there's another, a fresh pot of coffee for you tomorrow morning.
I just want to say it was an honor to sit with you guys and understand, I am only six years here in Reading. I work at Reading Area Community College, so every district involves me as a member of the community and I'm involved in community education and I see members of the community every day and I work with them and I, I really became a proud citizen of Reading and thank you guys.
Thank you, thank you, wonderful. Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
We need you.
Thank you, thank you. I love Reading. I have become a proud citizen of Reading and love to work with the community in Reading.
Good.
I, I moved in from the suburbs thirty years ago and I have to say I have very few complaints. So, if I may, as, as a staff person, you all have been a great help to me. You've been responsive, you took it all on yourselves and you really tried to come up with a bunch of options. And I would just like to thank all of you for your time, for being at meetings, for communicating between meetings, for actually coming up with some, some, some options and for having some good thoughtful deliberations. It was more than just a mathematical exercise, you really put your heart set away and I really appreciate that. So for me, thank you all.
You're quite welcome.
Thank you.
Linda has kept us legal, taking great notes, saved me from a bunch of anguish. So, Linda, thank you.
My pleasure.
And my, thank, thank you for, for really doing all the legwork to make this all happen. We appreciate that.
Yes, as far. As far as the staff goes, this is the most support I've had from any type of public thing and volunteer thing I've ever been involved with. So you've both been really, really efficient and very, you came up with great things that we've asked you to do and so it's been really a wonderful experience.
I wanted to make your job as easy as I could, but make sure you had all the information that you needed to do that job.
I would like to offer to, after the public hearing or our presentation as a team to city council, I will buy the first round of desserts and coffee at the DoubleTree.
I'll hold you to that, Lee.
Okay, I will do that. I'm a man of my word, I'm a man of my word.
I look forward to that.
Time and date.
Okay. You've all been wonderful to work with, thank you so much.
Thank you, Lee. Thank you again, everybody. Do we have anything further to be discussed? All right, I think we can formally adjourn and wrap this up for another ten years.
See ya.
Thank you, thank you.
On the commission.
Yeah. You can be commissioner instead of staff. Yeah, and hopefully in ten years, I'll be that. So this is my second one.
This was my second one, I'll be out. But this was also my fourth, the seventh census. So next time around will be my fifth. My goal was to retire in twenty thirty. We'll see how that works out.
Bye-bye.
Guys, that's all we had, everybody.
Have a good night.
So.